703, First Order of Business is the Prayer and the Pledge. Those who would please join us.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of the community of Fairview. Thank you for the time that we've had to bring together our thoughts. Lord, lead, guide, and direct us as we go through this meeting this evening. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Excuse me? We have a motion for approval. I would like to add, as requested by City Attorney Cantrell, to Old Business 8D, discuss and/or take action on resolution to set a public hearing on July 17. I would like to also add, under New Business 9H, discuss and/or take action on a stabilization plan for our reserve fund account. Would there be any other additions or deletions this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add to the agenda the possibility of the city hosting a forum for the city judge candidates, and I'd like for that to discuss our actions. Please, Mayor.
9I, discuss and/or take action, the city of Fairview hosting a forum for the city judge candidates. Any other additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next item is citizens' comments. We have Mr. Jim Power. Welcome. You have three minutes to share your comments or questions.
Tonight, you're going to be discussing the MTMC line again. I understand the line's going to be in, go in there, and that's going to happen. I know last week, there was a man up here and talked about MTMC killing his bees and not being able to get a response from them. I want you to remember that tonight whenever you're considering this. During this conversation, it has been requested that they plant prairie grass underneath the lines. If they plant the prairie grass, establish it, there will not need to be any spraying. I would like to ask the city, or to have this in the contract, that any maintenance underneath those lines not be done chemically. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. John Cherry, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We are, the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce is, well, we're going to make a presentation here in just a little while. You've got us on the agenda. But I would also like to announce again that we, on our July 15 luncheon, we have invited, and she's accepted, the commissioner, the State Commissioner of Tourism, Susan Whitaker, will be here speaking to us. It'll be held at Gary's Place. So all are invited. You don't have to be a member to be there. I think they have a capacity of, I think, nearly 70 people, maybe more than that, I'm not sure. But it's, usually we have about 50 people or so that come to those luncheons. When we've had Marsha Blackburn in the past, that's been about the size of the crowd that we've had. And I think the last event we had at a luncheon was about that size. So anyway, it's very, we're very excited to have the commissioner coming to talk to us about tourism. And so I want to announce that. We have the Nature Fest coming up, September 13. We had our first planning meeting with volunteers this Tuesday night at La Plaza. We have another one coming up in two weeks from the same Tuesday, two weeks from that Tuesday. Again, I think that's July 1 at 6:00 PM at La Plaza. Anybody that would like to join us and help with the planning, we would, we welcome that. So we appreciate that, and we'll, we'll talk to you more about the presentation that we're going to do.
Thank you. Next item is our Business Spotlight. We want to welcome Ms. Angela Standard. She's presenting Healthy Home Company. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. Healthy Home Company was founded on a mission, to make your home a healthier place to live. And I just want to start off my presentation with a brief video. And while you're watching this, if you would just please think about the products that you use every day in your own home.
No thought was really given to the health effects, maybe even outside acute effects on workers. I mean, if something was killing someone in a factory, you might slow down the production of it. But once it was out into the environment, there were no laws, there were no regulations, there were no thresholds. And that is largely true today. I mean, one of our toughest talking points, both with reporters and with regular people, they just can't believe these chemicals aren't regular. But they're not.
A lot of these chemicals are post-war creations. So they, they entered commerce, you know, in the aftermath of World War II, at a time when safety testing requirements just didn't really exist. So these chemicals have been in consumer products for decades. And a lot of them are hormone-disrupting chemicals. They, once they're in our bodies, they mimic estrogen or testosterone, and they trigger all of the biological processes that hormones trigger.
We have found over 200 toxic chemicals in the umbilical cord blood of babies. So you're polluted before you're born. Some of those chemicals were banned 30 years ago, and they're still showing up in newborns today. So we have this incredibly disturbing legacy of pollutants that stick around for a long time. They're toxic. They get into our blood. And on top of that, we have a flood of new chemicals and uses of those chemicals in consumer products, day in and day out, that we're exposed to.
It's often overwhelming when you think of 80,000 chemicals out there in commerce, and how many are entering every day into our lives. Now, if you picture a tanker truck on the road, filled with industrial chemicals that haven't been tested for safety, well, picture two of those, or 10, or 100. Picture 1,000 of those. Picture 100,000 of those tanker trucks, or half a million of them. Enough to line all the way from California to New York and back again. That's how many industrial chemicals enter our commerce every single day, and most of them have never been tested for safety. Now, that can be overwhelming, and it should be. We need to take action. But for an individual parent, it's important to know that we only have a very small area to defend. Our home, first of all, but even narrower than that. The chemicals get into kids basically in just three ways. It's what goes into their mouth, it's what they breathe, and what goes under their skin. And if we take charge there, that's the best way that we can protect our own kids.
So wow, 80,000 chemicals that we're exposed to, unregulated in our country. 11,000 of those toxic chemicals are banned. Not not recommended, but banned. Chemicals is not okay with me. My own son was diagnosed with juvenile diabetes last year. Every 60 seconds, a child from the age of 1 to 18 is diagnosed with diabetes. Unacceptable to me. So I joined Healthy Home Company. I became a certified, toxic-free, professional representative to reach my family, my friends, and my community, because we need to make a change. Healthy Home Company has given us the power to do so. We have to buy shampoo and laundry detergent and soap and deodorant and toothpaste. What we ask is that you make intentional buying decisions to a company that cares about you, your family, and the environment. And we've made it really simple. We are a membership-based company like a Costco's or a Sam's. Membership is only $14.95 a year. You have your own personal online store. There's no minimum. You buy what you want for what you need in your, in your own family. The products are made right here in the United States, and it's free shipping with over $50. So it's convenient, and you're doing something that's healthy for your family. You can be part of the solution. On a wider spectrum, I've been doing a lot of research, and I'd just like to take a second to talk about the city, about considering changing the toxic chemicals that we use in our buildings, our own buildings. I'm sure that whoever the janitorial service or the person that cleans our buildings would appreciate having a toxic-free product. It's been proven, I've done a lot of research from Colorado to Michigan to Minnesota, countries across the United States who have already gone green in their city buildings. They have had a reduction in cost for their products that they use to clean their buildings, and they've also had a reduction in employee absenteeism because there's been less health issues. And I know the fiscal year's coming up right around the corner, but I would love to be afforded any opportunity to just speak further about that. And then lastly, I don't know what you are all doing on Tuesday night, June 24th, but our CEO, Billy Glenn, is coming to Nashville. Healthy Home Company has taken our cause. We're going across the nation, east coast to west coast, north to south. He is coming to spread the awareness of toxic chemicals, what they do to us, the prolonged uses, usage of them, and what we can do about it. We, as consumers, can change this. But it starts with the intentional buying. And so I just ask, encourage you to come on Tuesday night. It's in Cool Springs. It's at 7 o'clock. It's an amazing, I got to see him in Hartford last weekend. He's powerful. You, you will just be energized, and you will leave there wanting to make a difference. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next item is awards and recognition. We have a few, and I'll turn the floor over to City Manager Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on awards and recognition is the presentation of a proclamation for Ms. Kathy Grimminstein, who is retiring from the library. I'd like for her to come forward and for y'all to come and present this to her, and if there's someone in the audience that can take pictures, I would love to see them do that. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Ms. Kathy Grimminstein. She's, go ahead. I would like to read that Ms. Kathy Grimminstein has been with the library since 1997. She has been the branch manager of the Fairview Library all these years, with the exception of one year when she worked in the Franklin as an administrative assistant. Kathy was working in the office, but she came back to Fairview. She loves working with the people. Ms. Dolores Greenwald is with her, which is the library, the Williamson County Executive Director. We are grateful that she has put in her time and her effort and her commitment to Fairview. I personally have worked with her when my children were in the library program, and many of you have also. Her heart and soul is in the Fairview Library, and she will be dearly missed. But at this time, we'd like to congratulate her on a wonderful career as our librarian at Fairview Library. Thank you, Ms. Grimminstein. We have a proclamation for Ms. Kathy Grimminstein. It says, "Whereas Williamson County Public Library Fairview Branch Manager Kathy Grimminstein is retiring from the Williamson County Public Library after many years of service, including 17 years with the Williamson County Library as an employee." She began her tenure with the library as a volunteer in 1989, when the library was simply a trailer in the city hall parking lot. In 1990, our current library was built, and in 1997, Ms. Grimminstein was hired as the Fairview Branch Manager. She has remained there except for the year of tenure, when she took the role as Assistant Director in Williamson County Library System in Franklin. Whereas, it was through her efforts that many preschool children enjoyed their first story hour, and many other children grew a love for reading through various programs developed and grown during her tenure. Whereas, Mrs. Grimminstein's love and enthusiasm for her work serves as an excellent example to all. She has been instrumental in the Fairview Branch, becoming one of the branches noted of top circulation in the county. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the mayor and the Board of Commissioners call on all of our community to join with family and friends in extending a heartfelt gratitude to Ms. Kathy Grimminstein for her years of service in the Fairview community, and to express to her best wishes in her future endeavors.
And on behalf of the staff of the Williamson County Library, we would like to present you with this plaque. Thank you so much.
Since 1997, that's been the highlight of my life, to work at the library. And I've seen a lot of children grow up. Some of those who have graduated still come in and call me Ms. Kathy, because that's, that's what they called me. But we all saw, technology has been important to the library. We've gotten increased computers over the years in helping people find resumes and get jobs. I think we were responsible for that, and, and I love this community, and I know the new branch head, the branch manager will love this community just as much as I do. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next thing, Mayor, I'd like to announce that Walmart has donated $2,000 to our Fairview Police Department to buy radios. Be also a reminder that the pending ceremony will be at 6:45, June 30, for the lieutenants that Chief Cooper has promoted. And tonight, I'd like Keith to come forward and read this letter that I presented to y'all. One of our citizens complimented our public works people. And Keith will come forward, I'd like for him to read that and to record the fact.
And this letter was addressed to Wayne Hall, City Manager. I live at 7113 Northwest Highway, barely within the city limits. A few days ago, I had two trees, or two large trees fall across the road as a result of the rainstorm. It laid across the street, blocking traffic. I understand some of your staff came about 1:30 AM to remove it from the road. The next day, the trees were trimmed, cut, and removed. I just wanted to say how professional, efficient, and courteous your people were. Please, if you will, place a copy in their, in their files. And there's another page. I have always wanted to thank the city manager for all the wonderful roadway services provided. Vacuuming leaves in the ditch, mowing the sides of the road, plus shredding fallen branches or pruning shrubbery. It makes me proud to live in, in Fairview. Sincerely, Carol A. Pennington.
Great. Thank you very much.
And those guys were Todd Bratcher and Nick Green, and the rest of our crew came out later and chipped it up.
Right. Thank you. Anything else?
One more, Mayor.
Love good news.
This is, Mr. Cherry has a presentation to make with the chamber.
April 20.
Getting old, the bumpy road. April 20, we had the Taste of Fairview, which we had a lot of people show up for that. And we raised $2,330 for Meals on Wheels. And we, I've always wanted to give somebody a big fat check, and we have a big fat check here for Meals on Wheels. And we have some representatives from the Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency. Would you like to come up and introduce yourselves to, to our people here? And we have Ms. Kim from the, from the local kitchen.
Hello, I'm Shannon McGan with Community Outreach, and thank you so much for doing this. We love our seniors, and Fairview's a great community, and thank you for taking care of them.
Well, thank you for those posters. We had them all over town.
Oh, good, good.
All right.
Hi, Kim Cunningham. I'm the site manager for the Meals on Wheels program here in Fairview. I do personally want to thank everybody that participated. Our community has so many needy people, and at this time, if we don't take care of our seniors, who's going to take care of them? And they are so appreciative of everything that the community does, and this is going to help in so many ways. It takes $88 a month for approximately 20 meals to feed somebody. The food is very important to them, but sometimes we are the only people that that person may see in a day, in a week, to speak to them, just to say, hey, hi, how are you doing? And gives us an opportunity to get out at such an outreach. And again, I just want to thank you, and I thank everybody that participated.
Well, we had a blast doing it, and we're going to do it again next year. And this, this is a check, I think, somebody wants to turn around, everybody, let them take a picture of you.
They're all there talking to you.
And you get right in here too with us.
Yes. Sharon worked very, very hard.
You did. You were, you were a part of this, and.
My fingers aren't covered.
Thank you very much. It was, it was a pleasure. We had a pleasure eating the food too. All right. You got one more picture to take, and then we'll let them get on with their meeting. That's right. We had about 12 restaurants and grocery stores that participated in this. And we had one fellow that participated, that commented that it was much better than the Taste of Franklin. He said, they actually got fed. It was more like a, like a smell, but somewhere between a smell and a taste over in Franklin, but they really got fed over here. Thank you very much. You got the big fat check to take with you.
Thank you. We'll put it in her office.
Yeah, that'd be a good place for it. Here's the real check.
Okay.
Any others?
Mayor, that's all I have for that.
Excellent. Good news is good. Public announcements?
I do have several of those. Thank you, Mayor. First off is the reminder of the missions on Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon. We're still accepting applications for the Business Spotlight. The BLC meeting will be canceled July 3. The city hall will be closed July 4, of course, for the holiday. We will close July 3 at 2:00 PM to get ready for our fireworks display. The latest figure on the back taxes that we are sending out more notice, Brandy and Tom and Susan are working very hard in doing this. The latest figure is $4,596. That's an increase of about, oh, $2,500 over the last meeting.
Great.
We will be mailing out another statement to the back tax people in August. The latest figures on the donations and the, for the fireworks displays, we have $5,000 in event sponsors already. We have $900 in food vendors. We have $500 in non-food vendors. That's almost $6,500 that we have already in donations that's going toward our July 3 Independence Day celebration. That's all I.
Any other public announcements? Would anyone like to share the events so the people will be able to put on their calendar what's happening on July 3?
I will. We've got some locals coming in, which is great. The first musical act, and the live music starts at 5 on the 3rd. The first act is Angie Laster. The second one is Ron and Michelle Rigsby. The third is Scott Steel and Free Rein. And the next is Lane Johnson and the Jingo Jammers. And then Ms. Reagan Hoffman will sing a couple songs, as well as our national anthem.
Music starts at 5. What time do you think the event will start? Is there a start time on the?
Gates open at 4.
4 o'clock. All right. Starts at 5. Gates open at 4. Music starts at 5. And is there an estimated time of explosion?
Around 9:30, if you're prepared.
Yes, around 9:30.
Would anyone else like to share any comments about July 3 celebration? Any other public announcements from staff aboard? All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, approval of the minutes from the May 15, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Moved to approve.
We have a first and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 7B, approval of minutes from the May 29, 2014 Special Board of Commissioner meeting. First and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know that I heard everyone vote.
Aye.
I said aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is 7C, approval of the minutes from the June 5, 2014 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
First and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 8A, discuss and/or take action. Does it say any opposed? Moving on. 8A, discuss and take action on vacant board seats. We have taken care of a few of this, but we are still looking to fill some empty board seats currently at the city of Fairview. Some of these expiring board seats as of June 30, 2014. We have two seats available or coming up for expiration, and both of those candidates or sitting members have expressed interest to continue. That is the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is Mr. Mitch Doughty and Mr. Ricky Campbell. I see both of those are present. Would the board like for them to make a statement?
Only if they'd like to.
Is there a move to accept their?
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Y'all have anything to say? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome again. Appreciate your service. Next is the Industrial Development Board. We have Mr. Ken Weaver. That was expiring as of June 30, and he has expressed favoritism, and did say he would accept. I assume by the... Ms. Johnson, could you confirm the could-go-either-way, did he, did say that he would accept? That's how I read it. Didn't want to assume. Thank you. What is the motion of the board?
Moved to approve. Moved to approve.
Second.
First and second discussion?
He's not here.
He is not present. And he was duly notified that this would be on the agenda this evening.
Mr. Levin.
You can take action if there's somebody else, or you can withdraw your motion and defer.
If we're just, if he's already in it, then we're just extending him? Does we still, does he still have to be here? Because it's not really an appointment, we're just extending the appointment, right?
But the ordinance says if you've got any business to conduct before the board, you have to be present.
Okay, I withdraw my motion then, and move to defer.
Is there any other candidates?
We don't have any other applications at this time?
Yeah, so.
I will ask if there's, well, we have a, we have a motion. The second is withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
We do have a motion of deferment. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, I will ask, is there anyone present that has completed an application that would like to speak and request that seat?
Not everyone at once.
It's not church.
I know, it's the exciting boards that always get them.
Only because Mr. Weaver has expressed that if he was the only, then he would be willing? That way, if there's someone else and that may be an opportunity for someone else to step in? No one?
Just to let people know, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Weaver was out of a memorial service tonight, as many people are.
If there be no one, we have a motion and a second for the deferment of the Industrial Development Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is Planning Commission. We have a few interested parties. We did fill one of the three seats that was expiring June 30th, last meeting. We currently have two seats that are expiring June 30th, 2014. We have two current members that have expressed interest. Mr. Brandon Butler and Mr. Todd Behan, are you present this evening?
One of them is.
Mr. Behan could not be here tonight due to business that was already preset. So he's left a letter, you know.
We have other applications. Is Ms. Henryetta Hall present? Mr. Ron Rowe? Mr. Wayne Lowman? Ms. Lacey Shivers? Shivers? Ms. Susan Hoteling? I think I said it right. And Mr. Jim Power. We have two seats to fill this evening, commissioners. We have Mr. Brandon Butler present, and Mr. Jim Power present, and Mr. Wayne Lowman present. What are the wishes of the board for fulfilling those seats on the Planning Commission?
I make a motion that we reappoint Brandon Butler to one of those seats.
Second.
And I'll make a motion for Mr. Wayne Lowman, he's been here several times. He's back again.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Can we vote on two at one time, or should we wait? One, let's go back to the first, we have Mr. Brandon Butler. You withdraw your motion, sir? And do it after we do this?
Yes, ma'am, withdraw.
Okay, second has been, so we have, um, any discussion? All those in favor of Brandon Butler?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, there's one seat commissioner still available to fill.
Move for Wayne Lowman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Um, I would like the people to come up if they haven't already. Uh, I think most of them have spoke, but it wouldn't hurt since we're voting. If they want to talk about their experience or just introduce themselves again.
Glad to, thank you, Mayor, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. Um, you may have heard this before because I've addressed the board before. So I'll apologize in advance for any redundancy. But, uh, my wife and I moved here, built a home 12 years ago. We like it here. My mother was born here before it was Fairview, 90 years ago, thankfully she's still with us. So we're pretty pleased about that. So Fairview has a pretty special place in our family. So having said that, I feel like Fairview's at a pretty dynamic place in its position for, for growth. For the history, what's going to happen next year, five years, 10 years from now is going to really mold what Fairview is going to be. So I, I feel like it's a fairly dynamic time for us as leaders, decision makers, to plan and plan smartly for what we're going to do. And I want to be a part of that. Background on me, I've had 34 years' experience in development, planning, construction, design, engineering around the country. So I've had a pretty interesting perception from different aspects all over the country that I think I could bring to the board. And maybe some unique perspectives and that sort of thing, and therefore contribute to the board. So I appreciate the consideration, thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
I spoke last weekend, it's a matter of acknowledgement.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the one open position on the beer board? Do we have any applications at this time? Would there be anyone that has completed an application that would like to request favor on that seat for the beer board that is currently open? Anyone? Then we will continue seeking for a beer board member. And we will discuss the Industrial Development Board as an application is received. And we'll continue advertising for those two vacant seats and any other seats that may become vacant. And I'd like to thank the persons who volunteered and have, uh, offered themselves for the service of the community. We do appreciate it. We do look forward to working with everyone and welcome aboard. If you have any questions about the board meetings, schedules, please see City Manager Hall or Ms. Johnson after the meeting. That way they can make sure they have all proper information to be able to contact you, as well as to communicate the next meetings and how to get the information packets to you for your, uh, review. Thanks again. Next item is 8B, discuss and or take action on the revision of the Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation easement. We have the gentleman with us, thank you, welcome. Mr. Cantrell?
Uh, Mayor, I added to the easement. The language that the Land Trust of Tennessee wanted. It was basically some, uh, housekeeping stuff, but it was important to them. And it didn't really change the easement. I added the stuff that the board approved and asked me to put in there. And that's where we stand. It didn't greatly change the easement, but it's important for the city.
Last meeting, there was a gentleman who spoke with us about chemicals. And he expressed a great concern about the chemicals and the potential of the bees, that we have a very healthy population in Bowie Park. Their concern is not necessarily the agreement. And of course, he was very, 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 very grateful and thankful for his electricity and the opportunity to have electricity. So I do want to make sure he, he did express that over and over and did not want this to be a negative, but did want it to be a cooperative where everybody is working together for the well-being of not only the people, the easement, but the, the life, the lives and bees. We have no regulatory authority, it was their statement, and they do understand that. The boundaries of the pesticides, uh, that you choose are, of course, what you have to do by law. But they did make a recommendation and they did ask that if any products, that the use of the products, um, that are, that you use the least toxic to the environment and that you provide an EPA regulation number for the pesticides that you would be using as the way that you, um, and the verbiage that said is control the growth by chemical means. That does not allow or state in any way what you will use, what you will not use, what you, uh, will try to do for the benefit of it being into our nature park, or how that will be applied. So that gave concern of that being a little open-ended for the citizens and the city and the benefit of our wildlife in Bowie Park. So if there's, there's anything you'd like to share there, we definitely would like to discuss that and ask, um, that we have some verbiage in there. But I also would like to discuss the options, as Mr. Powers has stated, of that right-of-way. Through the, um, the forestry plan that we were presented, it was stated that that area or any area near a TVA or a power line would be prairie grass. And if that is a possibility, that we would discuss that how that could take place, that we could co-op together to where no chemicals would be used in our park. And that would only be the way that we would definitely benefit, that there is no danger by the chemicals that you use.
Yes, that's correct. Middle Tennessee Electric's policy is if the areas maintained, the city mode, or even in someone's yard, chemicals will not be used. The only time we use chemicals is like an old fence row that's been grown up directly underneath the power line. We did state that we would sow back grass and smooth out the area once all trim, tree cutting and trimming was done. And the right-of-way was cleaned up and the ground was re-smoothed out. We would, sorry. We would sow grass back of the city's choosing, and I guess it is prairie grass. We would never heard what type of, um, products you guys wanted to go back with. But, um, we'll sow it back and if the city maintains it, um, there'll never be any chemicals used in that area. But if they don't maintain it and it grows up, um, our crews will have to come through there and use chemicals and Michael can explain, he's our right-of-way specialist for Williamson County. He can explain more about the EPA and the type of chemicals that we use. I'll let him expand on that a little bit.
Thank you, welcome, Michael.
That's more for our subcontractors, some type of questions, but I can get you all that information. But mostly all we're looking for, any woody stem brush that's in these right-of-ways, that's all we're concerned with. We're not concerned with wildflowers, grasses, weeds, or wildflowers, anything like that, we're not concerned with. We're just looking for woody stem plants that could, you know, endanger our lines. And if those are not there, we won't spray.
So if we have a amendment to the easement, that we will sow, or you will sow, prairie grass, and that the city would maintain that easement, that you would use no chemicals?
That's correct.
Now, that's not what I heard. What I heard, you would use no chemicals unless you had some weeds growing up or something you need to get rid of.
If the area is maintained by the city, like in normal yard would be, and there's no growth of stemy bushes and things of that, we will not be using chemical. Like Michael said, the only time we do use it is if it's not maintained and you have these wild bushes and stuff that grow, that, um, we will use chemical at that point. But if it's maintained by the city, then there will be no need for chemicals to be used.
But we will originally use some chemicals to clear?
No, we'll be using, um, our crews will be using, do we have equipment?
It'll be, it'll be done by mechanical means, with chainsaws, just like we know our normal trimming process.
Just to make sure that it's documented correctly, you're telling us that if we maintain that property, once y'all sow the grass and everything, but from the get-go, there'll be no chemicals used?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So in the verbiage where it says, um, to cut, trim, and control the growth, we would put an amended clause or a sentence there saying, "To be sowed with prairie grass by Middle Tennessee Electric and to be maintained by the city and no chemicals used."
That's correct. If it's maintained by the city, we won't use any chemicals.
City Attorney?
That won't be a problem to me, I just need to revise the easement.
To have a motion from the board with the added clause?
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
We talked to Keith about how much, who's going to do that? And do we have the staffing to form that?
And where are the telephone poles?
Yeah, Keith?
Discussion?
Usually with the prairie grasses, the we would let them go to get established and the woody, um, I believe the woody woody-stem branches, um, a lot of that would be like the, uh, blackberries?
No, I'm just thinking of trees.
He's talking about the stuff that's going to grow up towards the lines. As long as we keep it bush hogged, he's saying they're not going to spray.
Right, well, with the, um, prairie grasses that we've, um, talked to Mike Berkeley about.
We want them much higher than bush hog level?
Well, they'll, they'll grow a little bit, but we're, to get them established, we'd have to let them grow up. But we will, um, cut them down in the fall time. And, um, and then back in the spring, they'll start coming back, so.
But the prairie grass should never endanger the little power lines, am I right?
No, they should, should not, no.
Commissioner Bissell's question is, can we maintain that ourselves? Do we have the means to do that with our park staff?
Yes.
I'd like to also highlight on the second page, there's a typo as it changes unless it's already been made. Thank you, Keith. Says shall remain, and there's a T. And then the word property, it's the second paragraph, third sentence? If you want to.
Barbara, look that up. Keith, we ever got the telephone poles that were promised apart? Do you have any comments on that?
Once the easements are signed by the city, we'll provide the three telephone poles as utility poles as requested.
I'm sorry, when did you say that we're going to get them?
Once we receive assigned easements from the city of Fairview, we'll deliver the three poles.
I think we need to make it part of the contract.
On the second page, the second paragraph?
I believe they were volunteered prior to, to ever coming up for this.
And there's a T.
I'd have to find out, I wasn't a part of this project, turning.
Keith, am I correct or incorrect?
Originally, we thought that we originally had a price from them. And then, uh, we also talked about with, um, Matt, uh, we ended up having the workshop and talking about that. And that's when Matt brought up saying if, if the city was to sign it, we'll get the, the poles.
If the city were what?
If they would sign the easement, we would end up with the telephone poles.
So we have the, um, the added clause? And the approval is upon that added clause? That would be on the middle of the first page. You have the, the bold print of additional facilities shall be constructed without the cons- shall not be constructed without the consent. Then you have two sentences down, and control the growth. At that point, it would read, um, seed and strawed by Middle Tennessee Electric, prairie grass to be maintained by the city of Fairview, and no chemicals used to control the growth. Then it does discuss the trees and shrubbery in the next sentence, which was Mr. Michael's statement. It stays the same.
Are they responsible for it until it's established? Or are they just seeding and strawing and then we're stuck with it?
Once you seed, it grows. Keith said it needs to grow to get established. Keith said it needs to grow to get established.
Okay. Are they responsible for it until it's established or?
Who's that?
Middle Tennessee Electric.
To make sure it's established.
Like if it doesn't grow, are they going to come back and do it again or are we going to have to do it? That's my question because there's many times that...
To be seed and strawed and established, growth by Middle Tennessee Electric.
That's why we have bonds on other commercial projects to ensure that.
I'd have to find out from our Vice President of Engineering and Operations on how they would do that. Usually we initially just seed and straw it and then at that point, we never really had a problem with someone coming back saying something didn't grow when we do that. But I can find out for you and email Mr. Hall, let him know what they say about that. I don't see it being a problem, but I'm not the one to make that call.
Okay. And at that point, it'll be signed once we get a confirmation that we can put that clause and it's approved by all parties.
Okay.
One more question if I could, Mayor.
Discussion?
Is it true that some of the other homeowners along this route are being paid for their easements and some that are being, are their holdouts right now, that the courts will force y'all to, they will in fact give you the easement, but you are going to have to pay for it, yet you are asking us to give you our park for free? Is that true?
No. At this time, we don't have any landowner on Crowcut that is opposed to what we're doing. And we do not pay for easements, just like the city. We asked, that's how we keep our rates low, is by the membership helping us maintain our lines and build new lines and upgrade the lines without having to pay the customer. If there is a member that does object, we will try every effort to work that out with them. Usually, it's usually something, we have to move a fence or something of that nature to make their property whole for what we're going to do, kind of same thing we're doing with the city, sowing back grass and selective cutting. We try to avoid condemnation at all possible at that time. If it does go to that, I don't foresee it happening, but then our lawyers and Board of Directors will handle it at that point and they just pay the property of the value of what our easement would be. But we have not had any objections from anybody on Crowcut as of yet and we have not paid anyone for any kind of easement out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? All those in favor of that amended or is that the only motion? It's the only motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Four.
I'm four, as long as it's with the amendment.
With the changes, that's what we asked. The change that there be no chemicals and there be prairie grass, that's what we're voting on.
It just needs to be worded that no chemicals will be used as long as the city maintains the property.
To be maintained by the city. Motion carried. Thank you. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
City Attorney will be working on the clause and also City Manager will be working with Mr. Mike Berkeley and Mr. Paisley on the type of prairie grass that's been discussed through our forestry plan. Thank you. 8C, the second and final reading of Bill 2014-14, ordinance number 836.
It's an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2013-14 budget. Move for approval.
Aye.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is discuss undertake action on resolution to set a public hearing for July 17th.
Substitute Resolution 10-14 is a substitute resolution for setting a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee located at 7355 Overby Road, as shown on the City of Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Role Map 46, parcel 44 from RS 40 to RS 15, mixed-use pud containing 108.41 acres belonging to Kathy E. Beata. This resolution is substituted for Resolution 4-13 in its entirety. Said Resolution 4-13 was adopted February 7, 2013. Move for approval.
Aye.
Motion and second discussion. We have Mr. Beata present for the property owner. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, new business, discuss undertake action on recommendations from the Finance Review Committee. Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. As we have later agenda items, the Finance Committee has been meeting and been working with the CFO in preparation for the budget presentation tonight and discussion. And what we'd like to do is kind of give you our take on it, including some background information that we thought was pretty pertinent, excuse me, to the perspective as to what's been going on with our city and where our money has gone and what the future looks like. So if we could, Nick, would you put on the PowerPoint for me and go on to the next slide? In short, just a little bit about the budget process and that is it's our spending plan. And because of that, it's a plan. That means that we try to use the best information available to us. We try to guess at what revenues and expenditures may be, but things change. And because they change, then there's an amendment process, which is something we just passed and there were several passed the week I was out. So just to give you an idea, the BOC, this particular board, has spent a lot of time and effort improving our infrastructure. We, no disrespect to the previous boards, but they had not put a lot of time and effort into replacing equipment or fixing roads or anything of that nature. They were kind of maintaining the status quo. And for some reasons that you will see in the next presentations and slides, this board has been very active and it's costly. Any of you that spend any money, any time know that things cost more today than they did yesterday and so forth and so on. So if we could go to the next slide. This is the 10-year budget track record for the City of Fairview. And as you can see, over the last 10 years, our budget has doubled. And that's a pretty profound statement. Now, I don't necessarily want to focus on the amounts. That'll come out in the budget hearing. But what I want you to look at is the trend line that's involved here. And as you can see, the trend line shows that we're increasing in revenue, but we're also increasing in expenses. And people would say, why? Why is that going up? Well, the first thing you have to realize that in this 10-year period that we just passed, the compound inflation factor is between 35 and 40 percent. Now, you hear inflation figures all the time and say for this year, it's 2 percent or for this year, it's 3 percent. But when you start compounding that, you don't get 10 years times 2 percent, our inflation is 20 percent. You get that compound factor, which really almost runs it to 35, 37 percent. The other thing that you need to know, and if we would go to the next slide, is our population has increased by 33 percent. 10 years ago or 2000 census, 13 years ago, we had about a little less than 6,000 people. And in 2015, it is estimated that we will have about 8,500 people in Fairview. And those people drive on roads, those people want their leaves picked up, those people want their fire hydrants and those kinds of things. Now, what I did hear, because this is the important relationship, if you take the numbers that I showed you for the budget, you could say, well, we're out of control. In 10 years, we have doubled the budget. What are we spending the money on? When you, reality, when you acquire the budget trend line to our population, and there is some logic that as your population grows, your expenses are going to grow. What you find is that our budget growth and the growth of the population are very much in a relationship with each other. And when you add that to the inflation factor and then you add the final piece, that just the purchase of the fire hall and the widening of Highway 100, you'll count for 84 percent of the 100 percent growth that we've seen in the budget over the years. So for me, as a member of that committee and I think for my other committee members, I think that's a pretty interesting perspective, that our expenses and our revenue are going up, but they are going up in a relationship. And as we all expect, the city's going to continue to grow and the cost of providing those services are also going to go up. And the inflation figure for the last 12 months, as of June the 13th, was 2.2 percent for this year. So just to give you that perspective, that in terms of overall growth and everything, the city is in a popular, I mean, a relationship with the population. Next slide. Also wanted to take some time as a committee because we wanted to know, where did our money go? Where did that last 15 percent that Alan just didn't account for, where did it go? And I won't bore you by reading all of these things, but it's a pretty impressive list. When you hear later on tonight, when we talk about where some of our reserves have gone, you're looking at where some of our reserves went. Everything up here cost us something. Maybe it was small, maybe it wasn't small, but the bottom line is these are the things that have been accomplished, that are on the books, have been done, are completed over the last three to four years to improve the infrastructure of the city. Next slide. These are the ones that are in progress. And not a thing up here is free, except maybe safe routes to schools, we might get 100 percent grant for, but we will have to maintain those sidewalks and we will have to cut up grass and trim. And so there'll be a cost with that once you finish it. But this is the stuff that's going on right now, that in looking to the future, we're either going to have to make a decision to stop it, defer it, or to pay for it because nothing comes cheap. So just to give some perspective of where we are, I thought it would also be helpful to know where we are in comparison to other places. Could you go again, Nick? Percent debt payment of revenue. This is where we've been over the years and we've heard a lot of discussion about the purchase of the police cars and the fire trucks and that sort of thing. Let me tell you that nationally, city debt runs about between 15 and 20 percent. In the state of Tennessee, it runs on the average for our municipality about 14 percent. As you can see, we 10 years ago had a higher rate of debt when we had a much smaller budget than we do right now. And what happened in the middle is kind of an illusion because that's at a particular time that some of you will remember very vividly, we were selling parts of Bowie Park. We were selling this land out here in front of the city and there was not anything going on with that money other than putting that money into the reserve funds. It wasn't until 2010 and 2011, when we started to replace the fire trucks, and that we saw that our debt started to go forward. And as you can see, currently going into the current year, our debt payments will run about 9 percent, some 5 percent less than the Tennessee State City average. Nick? So what do we have and what are we up? And so I concur with everything that's set up here about it's time for us to make a solid plan for the future. But I also am not worried about our city's financial state. We have $23 million in assets, of which we only owe $3 million against. That's an 86 percent equity position. $20 million in the black. That's a pretty good place for our city to be. But when you stretch it out, I thought this was one of the most interesting things. We almost never talk about what the county does. And if you will see, the county, each person in Fairview, man, woman, child, baby, the county has mortgaged you for $2,300. The City of Fairview has only mortgaged you for $397. Now, Alan doesn't think that should go up, don't get me wrong. It's not what I'm advocating here. But in perspective, the amount of money that our city owes to provide that list of services that I showed is a pretty good management of the money, in my opinion. Look at what you owe the state of Tennessee. And that's the low figure. There's another figure out there that says that the state owes us about $1,700 a piece, which is what the people of the City of Franklin owe their city, about $1,700 a piece in terms of per capita debt. Of course, we all know the federal government and their problems. And to really put it into perspective, we owe $44,000 per capita, each of us, for the federal debt, which we're not going to try to solve tonight, thank goodness. But I thought this was a very interesting slide in terms of the money that we've borrowed and how that interjects into the conversation about did we borrow too much money? Does that affect us? This combined with the other slide shows that in terms of our debt load, in terms of our percentage of revenue that we are applying to the debt load, in terms of our overall per capita debt, the city has been very conservative in what we bought, especially considering that multiple column list of the things that we have done to upgrade both the service, the quality of life, and the infrastructure of the city. And I'd like to turn it over to my fellow committee member, Ms. Brooks, and let her talk to you a little bit about our perspective on the upcoming budget that the CFO will be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first I would like to say that when all of this change started happening in Fairview, Bob and I were thrilled to death. I mean, you see new buildings, new roads, new streetlights. It was exciting. We never stopped to think where the money was coming from. We just assumed that everything was okay. And in some respects, everything is okay, but we have gone just a little bit further than we should have, I think. We should have slowed down just a little bit and saved some money in reserves. My goal tonight in trying to talk about the budget is to explain it in layman's terms so that the public understands where we are. Fund accounting is complicated if you've never been in it before. And I'm still just a little confused on it.
Nick?
We have to come up with the numbers so that the revenue matches the expenses. And we think we have as good a shot at it as you can. Year or what we had budgeted for last year. And last year's numbers did not come in right. We were under on revenue and over on expenses in several categories. So my thinking for this year is we will go month to month and we will know where we are and if we have to make cuts. But that's the best that we could do. As part of that process, we are not going to have any new projects for next year. We have reduced the operating expenditures. We're saying it's doable. Mr. Hall says it's doable. So I think that every city employee understands where we're at and that they will make every attempt to meet the expense that we have set forth. But we have made some major cuts. But we have made some major cuts. We are allowing for the 2% merit raise in the evaluation system, and I don't think we included the whole $48,000 that it cost, because we think there will be some people leaving. That almost sounds like I hope some people leave, doesn't it? That's what I'm saying. In November, when the health plan comes up, you're going to have to evaluate, we have planned for a large cut over what we have spent this year. It's going to hurt. I think we've reduced the cost, not, not what we had budgeted last year, but the cost of what we have spent, by $100,000. Tom has committed to getting a plan that that's going to pay. Of course, it's going to be up to the board to, to buy into that. There's no way in the world we can afford the budget for what we have now. That plan alone was going to go up 28% this year. That's over what we paid this, in the past year. But I can't tell you at this point what that plan's going to be. We designed the plan, so that we're not building any revenue on any of the new businesses. That will just go to our reserves when it shows up, except for the next slide, the county tax. I'm sorry, I'm reading the other lines to see what it says. So basically, Tom took what we actually bought in this year, and/or he budgeted what was budgeted last year. And if you look at the year before that, sometimes there's just fluctuations that we couldn't understand, so he, he put in what, what was budgeted for last year, or the actuals, whichever seemed appropriate. But in the la, March, April, and May, we had $27,000 over our normal for the county tax, 26 over in April, and 43 over in May, and I think we had 45 over in June. So the three-month average was $32,000. That annualized is $384,000. He added that to the $926,000 that he projects that we're going to have at the end of this, at the end of June. So the county sales tax was 1.3, 310,000. The current revenue is over $43,000 a month, so that's going to give us an additional $11,000, or $132,000 to go into reserves. We're planning on everything going into reserves that is not budgeted into expenses. The next slide. The fiscal year '13 and '14, we had extra expenses, the weather-related, utilities increased, we had professional fees, and a couple other things that went way over, the insurance went way over what we had budgeted. They have done a good job in the last six months of reducing expenses as much as they could, and we expect that to carry on all through next year. Next slide. There is a hiring freeze, if anyone, for the upcoming year. If anyone leaves, unless they are a critical person, they will not be replaced. No additional funds will be authorized to spend unless it is beyond our control, like gas and utilities. If approved, and we're, we're pretty much saying that we can't have any capital projects next year, but if you approve any, they will have to come out of the restricted funds, except for the fire truck equipment, and that's coming out, that is budgeted in. They cannot spend any capital money until the money is actually in our checking account. You can't do a project in October, when the money's coming in in December. You have to wait until the money's here. If that means you can't do it in the wintertime, you'll have to wait till spring. The departments can move money around within their budget, if it's up to $1,000. For example, if they needed to buy a small piece of equipment, and their supply budget was under, they could move funds from one line to another to do that. The next slide. We have done the best job that we could do, and keep our current services, our current employees, and we think we have a reasonable budget. Like I said before, we will be looking at it monthly, and there's really no other easy answer. If you want to cut $400,000 out of revenue, you got to find $400,000 in expenses, and it's not there. So we think this will give us a $160,000 reserve at the end of the year, but I will show you something in a little while, that, how we got the, how we get there. We can continue the, the initiatives that he showed you earlier, that we're in the middle of, if we have the fund, if we have the money in the reserve funds, the restricted funds, or committed funds. And then we go to the next page. And this is where we really have our problem. It's cash flow problem. The money does not come, our expenses are pretty cut and dried across the board, except for things that we buy, you know, like truck, vehicles, or equipment, or something like that. They're pretty steady across the board. Our money flow is not steady. We get most of our property tax in, in December and February. Up until that point, we're running a negative cash flow, and because our reserves are so low, that is going to be, that could be a problem. Can we get this put up? Okay, so for years, it has been the practice of with the state. So our general fund, within the general fund, we have the park fund of $229,000 that can only be used for Bowie Park improvements. We have the street aid fund of $130,000 that can only be used for streets, the employees for the streets, or street equipment. We have the school facilities fund of $415,000, and that can only be used for the schools. That's where we send the $40 per pupil to the schools. And we had a special approval for us to use $91,000 for the library extension. We have the tree bank, that was $97,000, and it's only to be used for city-owned landscaping and trees. That comes to $872,535, in total of restricted and/or committed funds. And then we have a negative $99,000, where we pay our salaries and insurance and, and all of those things out of the general fund. So we have a fund balance of $773,000, but as you can see, all of that money is restricted. So the city can and has been using that as their cash flow, in my opinion, and I'm sure the committee would prefer that it not be either. All of those things should be standalone, and there should be like three months' reserves for the general expenditures. Well, we're not there. We can get there with a plan, but that, that is what we have to address. Now, to add to that, and, and these numbers are not cut and dried, because I did the projections from trends on operating expenses, on when I thought things would be spent, and when they would come in. So Tom and I will, will get this down right. He, he just has been a little overloaded, and we didn't get to it. But you'll notice in July, we're going to be short $164,000. In August, 57. In September, 89. And, and the cumulative total is at the bottom. So we're starting out at negative 100, and it just keeps, and that 100 is not included in these numbers. It just keeps getting worse until December. So the question we have to ask ourselves is how we're going to cover that shortfall? Are we just going to continue to use the restricted funds as our cash flow? Or do we want to take a temporary loan, or a temporary advance on the property tax, which I think we can do through the state? Is that true? But at the end of the year, if you look at the bottom, we come up with $169,000, if we made our revenue, and if we made our expenses. That's not much, but it's a beginning. And we hope that's going to be more than that, because we haven't built in the new At some point, not during this budget process, but we need to come up with a fiscal policy for the city, guidelines, that when you're not in the heat of battle, over budgeting, that you think is what the city needs to do, and the commission votes it in, and then you have, you, you put in that process something that says it requires a unanimous vote to, to override this rule. That's for a later date. But that's, that's pretty much where we're at. We can go through the line items on the budget, their, their best guesses. We have a commitment from the city manager that, and the department heads, I think, he's met with them, that they're going to try to live within what we have set up.
You've done a tremendous job. If you have us a surplus of $169,000.
We got to take the 100 out of it, it's not showing up there. No, the tremendous job will come from the employees of the city, if they can pull it
What made y'all decide to put the merit raise back in? Because the last budget we were presented did not have those merit raises, and especially with having to deal with a shortfall in the first place, why is a committee, did y'all decide to put it back in?
Trying to be fair to the employees. It's not really their fault that we're, where we're at, but I mean, we could take it back out.
How much would that save us?
What was the amount? I think it was $30,000 we added back in, wasn't it?
Yes, after the attrition calculation, it's right around $30,000.
With the what now?
It would, it would, will decrease the expenses by right, at $30,000.
Yeah, but what did you say before that, after the?
Attrition.
Attrition?
Do you want to explain that? Some getting, some not.
Well, you, you've got two factors that go.
Oh, people wouldn't, I got it.
First of all, you, you have some people that you're not entitled to until you've been here a year. So if I could use Mr. Umber as the example, Mr. Umber doesn't get it until he's been here a year, so you only have a partial impact of, of him, at, at when he gets his year in. Secondly, we've never had a year that we didn't lose some employees. Either they retire, or they quit, or they move on to other jobs, or something to that effect. We've never had a year, so that was not previously factored in there. And then you, you have the fact that we do have some employees whose performance does not warrant the merit raise, because their performance is not acceptable, and they're put on improvement letters. So that's not a lot of them, but it is, you know, some. So when you factor those things in there, the real impact is $30,000. And because we came up with a surplus of $170,000, to add $30,000 to that, at the cost of penalizing the very people we're going to be counting on to be the vanguards in this tight budget year, didn't seem to make a lot of sense to us.
So you're going to give them a raise, because we're going to have them do their job, which is to work within the budget?
No, we're going to give them a raise, because we told them at the beginning of the year, if they perform successfully at the end of the year, they would be entitled to a 2% raise. We're going to fulfill our promise to those employees.
Okay, and out of the 170,000 surplus, would y'all like to explain where the 170,000 came from that wasn't at the last budget?
Certainly. We explained that in the county sales tax change. That's the 130-something thousand of the 170, and then the actual revenue exceeds the expenses by $30,000. That's the 169,000.
Do you have the validation from the county, that you will resolve that revenue?
Validation from the county.
That the county is projecting that in their budget? That item she asked you about earlier.
You're going to have to bear with me a minute.
I'll ask the same question about the state sales tax, because I believe the state budget went down. For us to estimate an increase, I'm inquisiting, inquiring, how did you get that figure to put it in our budget at a 22% increase? And where did that validation come from, from the county or the state? If that's a key figure of where our surplus will come from.
It came, it came from the state, and it came from the actual that we have already experienced.
And do you have that in a letter form, email form, or who provided that to you?
Well, the state provides us the amount of money every month. That's what we have received.
So it's a projected off of?
It's off of what we've already received. We are currently receiving, in June, we received $45,000 from increase in sales tax. Some of it may have come from Walmart, some of it may have come from somebody else, but we got $45,000 extra. We took three months, March, April, and May, we got $43,000 in May, we got $26,000 or $27,000 in April, and the other one in the back. We averaged those three to come up with an average of 32,000. So that's, and that's what we used as our projection, 32,000, and then even though the last two months show that we're up in the 40s. Now, you can say that that could go back down. I suppose it could. Doesn't it make sense that the track record has been up each month now for five months, they would go back down? If it levelizes at 45,000, and never goes up If it levelizes at $45,000 and never goes up again, we will have $13,000 a month that's not in that budget that becomes surplus.
In the county budget and the state budget, they have a projection. So that is provided to you as a valid projection from them. My question is, do you have that? Or are we using our own numbers in our budget?
We are using the numbers, our own numbers, based upon what we have received.
There is a way to validate, to make sure that that number is as accurate as possible.
Well, I trust our projections as well as I would anybody in the state. We're using actual numbers. They're using guesses.
Our track record of projecting revenue has not been successful, so I do have a great concern of continuing that and escalating it 22% without valid information from the county or the state. Secondly, is there is a consideration that it could go down? Because there could be a possibility that some of the tax, sales tax that we are receiving could not be received. Now that we have Walmart, we could have a minus on another tax revenue that will no longer be in business. That is a possibility.
Well, that would be counterproductive to what we saw with Tractor Supply and Publix, and what we learned on our field trip to White House where they told us about and shared their data with us. So that would be counterproductive to the intelligence we already have.
We do disagree. I agree. Yes, ma'am.
That's 22% over what was budgeted last year.
Yes, ma'am.
But we got $20,500 in this year, so it's not significantly more than what we actually got this year.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we had budgeted $18,000 this year, and we got $20,500, so...
So 20 times 12? Is that annual or monthly? I'm sorry, I didn't ask that.
No, the $20,500 is annual. That's what we got in the current year. We had only budgeted $18,000.
And your proposed?
22. So the 22% up is because it's against the $18,000. It's not against the actual.
Okay, so 18 was what last year's was, and we actually received...
$20,500.
$20,500. So we're projecting 22.
I do know, Mr. Basell, you did state in the last meeting, I know Commissioner Johnson was not here, but you did state in the last meeting a request of an amount of raising taxes, 1 cent, the increase, and city manager did state that that was a $16,000. I guess in just fairness, Commissioner Johnson wasn't here, and if that discussion wants to take place, or is that a plan? I know y'all discussed a plan in your proposal of a loan. Is there a plan or conversation that you'd like to continue, or Commissioner Johnson would like to come in on?
We're not... The committee is not recommending any tax increases. Our data and information provided to you is based upon a levelized levy. Obviously, if, from our point of view, if you were showing, if you would create more money available for surplus. But our belief is solid that there will be surplus created for the reasons that we've said, and to proffer a tax increase just to build your reserves, when there is going to be money available, we believe, to build reserves anyway, doesn't make much sense to us at this time. And we are not recommending that we borrow any more money. We are recommending that we monitor this on a monthly basis and make that decision in real time if that decision is needed. If that decision is not needed, then we recommend that we don't do anything other than continue to hold a very tight budget.
Well, I do agree in recommending that we watch it month to month is wise. That should not necessarily be a recommendation. It should be best practice.
I have a question. When do the employees typically save their merit raises?
First, I believe, in July.
In July. So we would automatically have to come up with that increase. There had been discussion about possibly if, you know... Which I think, I mean, I love the employees, and this is no... You know, do they do a great job? And I know they deserve, you know, their step plan, and that really isn't the issue to me. But I've sat here and I've seen the situation we were in last year trying to weight out our projections, the city employees not being able to spend the budgeted amounts because we had just free spending. And I think when we're looking at a budget and we're saying, how are we going to go and how are we going to pay, to sit there and go ahead and do the merit play, step plan, it just... We've got to cut somewhere, guys. So, you know, I know it's not good, and a lot of county employees haven't received raises. We gave raises when the... There was an economic downfall in the country, and no other government was giving step raises, and we gave them step raises on their merit, which I was for the step plan. But at this point in time, when we're struggling financially when it comes to this year's budget, I don't think... I think the sales tax is going to increase. We're going to see it down the road, and we can build back our reserves. I think we've caught it. We can start over and rebuild our reserves. This is the problem. We don't have a reserve anymore. It was real easy to float things along when there was a reserve, but there's no reserve. So we've decided, we all can agree, it needs to halt in spending, and we can take a look at that. But when we look at ways to cut, the merit, the employee raises is one of those ways. But there was things we can do. We can look at it and say... We can look at it and say, we want to hold off into January instead of having that, because we know the tax dollars is coming. So I would just say, if y'all are bound and determined that you want to include the employees, even though I think it's a bad idea, but we really need to look at extending when it starts. Because if we're going to start out the first six months, which y'all are showing us, struggling up until tax season, then that's when the merit should start.
Mayor, we don't have any specific recommendations. We just wanted to give our committee a report. We have nothing else to add. If there's no specific questions for the finance committee, I would close our presentation.
I do have questions. What is... You spoke of our 2.3 million in hard assets, or land and buildings. Is there a number of our cash assets? Our liquid cash assets? Is there a number that someone can give us?
Well, that would be the $900,000.
$934, I believe, or...
Yeah.
Is that minus the $99,000?
Yep.
So $934,000 of cash assets?
$964,000.
$64,000, thank you. Okay.
It's really 773 because the drug fund, the facilities tax, I understand you cannot use.
So is it common practice, or in your reviewing in your committee, that the current accounts is used to balance a budget?
I can't answer that.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Mayor.
Revenue and expenses balancing the budget. We're doing revenue plus accounts to balance the budget. Is that common practice?
It has been the practice of the previous financial officers to not segregate the funds, to keep all of the funds in one bank account, and to use that to stabilize the cash flow. The committee believes that that practice needs to change, that that is part of the issue that's gotten our general reserve down low, is because you're not getting a clear, accurate picture each month of how much money you have in the reserves or restricted funds versus how much money you have in the other. And the only way to start that is to just stop and turn around and start the other way. Put it into practice in doing that. And that's what, why the committee was making the recommendation that we would not spend any restricted fund monies unless there was monies in that account. So for instance, a good example would be the annual gift to the schools that we give. We would time that gift when we actually had that $90,000 in that restricted fund account. Because in order to have that $90,000 in that fund account now, we would have to take that money out of general checking and put it into that account. We need to be moving to put these general, to reduce the amount of cash flow as we can, and put the money in the funds that it belongs in. The Blue Park Fund, the Drug Fund, and the Facilities Tax Fund have the money in them. That money already exists in those funds. But the School Tax Fund does not, and that money has to be transferred over and put in there. And the Tree Fund has the money in it as well.
One of your slides spoke of expenses. There wasn't an amount. It said, "We have spent over and above allocated expenses due to storms." I'm trying to think what the Senate said, but it said storms, something else.
Well, our weather, we had the coldest winter on record.
Is there an amount of those expenses?
No, but Tom could give them to you.
We can give them to you.
Yes. City Manager, Hall?
I could give you a range figure. The utility bills from Middleton Electric doubled from $3,000 over $6,500, I think, two or three months in a row, so...
That's a crying shame.
Yes. But it did. It was during the zero weather, and so that was... And then we have the expenses of the additional work that had to be done due to the ice storm. There was actually a chipper that was rented during that stretch. Instead of averaging four or five loads a week, we went to almost 90 in two weeks, three weeks at the time.
So would there be overtime in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a figure?
For overtime?
No, no, no. Just, it was said in a sentence, but there was no amount attached to it. So I'm just asking, and if you want to pull that slide back out of that PowerPoint presentation, you had a few items identified, but there was no amount. I'm just asking if someone could share an amount?
I believe... I'm sorry. I believe these were addressed earlier, those five, part of those five categories that were given earlier. The, of course, the HRA has been huge.
Which is the insurance, the employee benefit package?
Yes, that is the reimbursement portion. We've... And then this is something... The renewal period was, came on in, it was November 1. My first day here was November 21st. I did not realize, just going through the renewal, and I don't know if the previous, if I was planning on adjusting any numbers or not. But our budget amount was $60,000, and what we spent as of June 12th is $137,000. And then down the line, we've had four other categories that just were over and above what we anticipated.
So utility increase, weather due to overtime, and administration in HR, and insurance, and premiums, and deductibles.
That's your $99,000. That's what we're short. And $77,000 of that shortage is your medical for your employees. Approximately $20,000 is your utilities increase, $25,000 or $20,000 for the third-party investigations, and then overtime. That's how you eat up $99,000 all your budget.
Okay. And then the expenses that were scrubbed, do you have the amount of the expenses from last budget to this budget in a percentage or a dollar amount of what the departments did reduce their budgets by?
No, ma'am, I do not.
So that sentence there, that all departments have scrubbed expenses to the level of necessary stay in business, is there a dollar figure attached to that, or is that just a statement?
That is a statement. Every expense has come through the city manager and/or my office to classify as necessary to be spent to conduct business.
Okay, so to have that sentence, there must be some percentage...
$200,000.
Or a dollar amount? Thank you.
$200,000 is what the departments didn't spend that was in the original...
We reduced the budget of expenses in all departments by $200,000?
Yes.
And is there an amount on the third item? A dollar amount or a percentage of the last budget to the proposed budget that validates that sentence?
Do you understand the question?
I mean, the sentence was made, then there must be something of purpose for that sentence, and a purpose would be a dollar amount justified or a percentage justified. And then if a percentage is there, you can do the math, and there'd be a dollar amount.
There isn't an amount, but I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Sure. Okay.
Well, maybe Monday.
That's okay.
Give me the weekend.
I just feel it's, when we speak about our budget being cut, it should be a number that is cut, and that would be justified of what we did due diligence in the process of going through this year's budget, that there's an amount and a number that has been reduced.
I can tell you that they were running over $400,000, and they dropped it to about $350,000 on average a month. But I can't tell you where that was.
The $50,000 a month times 12? Okay?
No.
600,000?
Six, times, they only were doing that in the last six months, where they were reducing expenses.
That's last year, yeah. I mean, from there, and what you're asking, or I think, correct me, is from the original budgets they presented, what did...
No, last year's budget to this year's budget.
Okay.
Now, I don't know about comparing it to this year's budget, but I can tell you that that's what the city employees have been doing the last six months.
Simplistically, in my business, if I said I scrubbed all my expenses and I reduced the budget to revenue, then I would have a dollar figure.
Right.
That's all I'm asking for, as far as the committee, or the CFO, or the city manager.
We have spent $51,000 on repair and maintenance of motor vehicles. Because of the purchase of the new motor vehicles, we have reduced that for the upcoming budget to $38,000.
And I guess my...
Approximately 1/4.
1/4. So the budget has been expensed, cut 25%?
Because we bought new equipment, and we shouldn't have the same maintenance costs with new equipment that we do with old.
Well, you... Let's see. I might be able to ask this in the next item. I'll ask it in the next item. Any other discussion on the recommendation PowerPoint presentation? And I am very grateful for the time that y'all have spent in presenting and getting the information together. Do appreciate that. Any other comments from the board?
Mayor, I would like to comment and maybe just ask a question real quick. What was the discussion about the property tax increase?
Sorry.
Was that from the committee, or was that from this board?
I think it was just a thing. I'm sorry. Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
I think it was just a comment that they wanted to know the amount that a penny would raise, and therefore, ever how much, as part of a consideration, if you wanted to, but there wasn't really any discussion about it.
Commissioner Basell addressed the question, so he may want to elaborate on it.
Yeah, I was just curious as to, excuse me, did we have any knowledge as to if we restored any of the increase or the decrease that we gave? Would that benefit us? That was before we... That question was asked at the conclusion of the meeting, before we had another meeting and re-scrubbed it again and came up with a surplus. And now that there's a surplus, I don't even think, I have no desire to have any further conversation with it. I don't think that it's necessary. I think when you have a surplus, you don't tax people more to save money. We want to save... We, we want to save money, we save money by doing it the way we, the committee outlined it. We don't save money by taxing people to put, put it in a reserve.
The city's not in the business to make money. We're in the business to break even. This is not like a normal business, when somebody owns a business and has to make money for a living. So, I've been doing this for 14 years, and I've never voted for a property tax increase and will not, because we will always be able to find cuts. And that's just how I feel.
The 164 surplus, you also added, just for clarification, that that would be minus 99. So can we give a true figure that you are, CFO question, a true figure? When you say the word surplus, it sounds great, and I appreciate a penny. Five cents is great. But when you say the word surplus, you can't give a figure and then say, "But it's minus X." What would be the surplus that you're projecting in this budget?
The surplus that we are, I think, and, can I take a step backwards before I answer that question?
Sure. You're the CFO.
I, I have, as I first came on in this position, and started studying the audit, you know, I think anybody that has a finance background is concerned, you know, when you have, in a two-year period, there was 2.3 in reserve, and then now, where, where we are. I've, after doing research, and granted, it's as limited as it is in six months, I have really tried to wrap my head around everything. And I don't have it all, but I, I do feel like I have a somewhat of an understanding. I feel like this, this board and this, has, has made an investment in this town. I believe you can look around and, and, and just like Ms. Donna stated earlier, it's prepping for what's to come. And I feel like there's been some decisions that have been made that maybe were a little premature, and some money spent that probably shouldn't have, but the bottom line is, they have been spent. And I believe it was for the betterment of this community. Now, if, and I've stated this to several, if, if I thought at, at any point in time that, that revenue was going to flatline or decrease, there's, it's a no-brainer on what to do. Where we are now, with, with just now getting indicators of revenues increasing, some exciting things coming from the code side, planning side, sales tax side, I feel like it would be maybe premature to make wholesale cuts in the resources that you guys have already invested in. But on the other side, I'm not totally 100%, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. And if, I think if we watch it extremely close and say, "Hey, we were wrong, let's change." I just, I just don't know that right now, with, with, without, it's, it's, it's going to be up to you guys, is if, if, do we want to put our faith in, in that revenue is going to follow, follow through, like, and, and follow our growth as, as we hope to, hope it's going to do, or, or, you know, do we take a few steps back? So that's kind of what I've been wrestling with, with the Finance Committee, with, with the City Manager, with, with different people. And I feel like we've put together the best budget we can under the circumstances. It's not going to fix where we are. But I think we can maintain, and hopefully, as revenues increase, we can, we can make a plan that every extra cent that comes in over and above this budget goes in reserves. And that's, that's kind of my, my feeling on it. But like I said, it's, it's your vote, and, and I'll, I'll do whatever y'all recommend, whatever y'all recommend I do. Now, as far as the exact figure, I, I can't tell you. I don't, I, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball as far as what exactly revenues are going to be, but I do feel like what we have put down on paper is conservative. And I, I hope that it's, and I feel confident that it's, it's going to be more than what, what's been up on the, on the board. I can't, I can't prove it, but I just know through, we're giving a 32,000 number, I'm seeing 45 now. I believe we've seen the lowest portions, part of that so far. I feel like our property tax is going to come in much more close to where we predicted than it did last year. Anyway, I will go forward now and try to answer your question, but I, I don't believe I do have an answer as far as the exact number or, or of reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. I was looking for the math of the 164 minus the 99,000, which is approximately 65,000 according to the presentation. Is that correct?
If, if it indeed comes in at, at a negative 99,000, which he, he's got a couple of checks in that he wasn't expecting to have, so it could not be a negative 99,000. But if that is the case, yes.
Thank you.
The, the reserve will be 69,000.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
May I say something, please?
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
You are the City Manager.
I don't, Tom, are you projecting the May and June sales tax into this budget?
City Manager, could you lean into the mic right there? They're having trouble hearing.
We, we can project May and June, which we've already earned in, in the sales tax at the end of this month. They won't be paid to us until July and August. Now, what we have to do there is we have to reduce last year's money that we received, but any excess that that is over for May and June, we can include it in the budget. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
He has a projected figure, and that's the projection of May and June, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it, it is included in what our discussion is. Thanks.
Yes, everything's included.
Other discussion?
I, I think we've got one point of confusion here. The, the number you were asking him for, Mayor, is correct if you don't balance by taking the 99,000 or whatever it turns out to be from the reserve at the end of the year. If you want to start your reserve with 773,000 plus 99,000, then that's where you are. So you've, you've, you have already recaptured the full 162,000. The question is, which fiscal year are you wanting to capture it in? You don't, you don't eliminate the surplus. You simply make it a split allocation, rather than from all of the, of the future fiscal year, you go ahead and take 99,000 of it, because Tom has already subtracted that out of his projected end-of-the-year reserve balance. So if you wish to take that 99,000 out of your next year's projection, that's fine, but you have to add the 99,000 back into the reserve, so you don't start with 770-something thousand, you start with 800-and-something thousand.
864.
So that over the, at the end of the fiscal year, next year, you're still benefiting 160-something thousand dollar surplus. It's just how you wish to record.
Any other discussion? Item 9B, discuss and/or take action on first reading of Bill 2014-18.
I guess I've lost it.
Ordinance number 840, and ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015.
Move to approve.
Sir.
Discussion?
Mayor, I'm not so sure. Are we ready for this? I mean, once we approve this with, I don't, I'm not settled on the budget. I would like to, we have a motion, so I would amend the motion that we schedule another workshop to discuss the budget before we vote.
Workshop or special meeting?
Um, special meeting.
Discussion on the amendment?
I mean, is anybody else ready to vote tonight?
Yes. This is first read, and.
There's a second reading and a public hearing.
Public hearing to come. But in order to meet the deadline, we need to have it enacted on the night of the 30th, whether we amend it or not between now and then, we need to have first read tonight.
It is not uncommon for an extension, so at, at that point, the deadline is not the, the point of matter. The correctness and the proper revenue source is of greater concern.
I understand, but I'm, I'm prepared to vote.
Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The original motion, we're in discussion, and I would like to ask some other of the questions, if I may. It was stated earlier that it is as tight as it can get. Yet some of my fellow commissioners feel that purchasing a brand-new 2015 pickup truck for a superintendent of the park is necessary. I believe when you say everything has been looked at and has been evaluated as being fiscally responsible, conservative, or staunch conservative, or whatever maybe the word is, that that is something that I would highly disagree with. That if you are looking to find money to pay your employees, yet spending $35,000 on a 2015 critical need pickup truck to work the trails, I believe that we are not on the same page. A second thing is, I would ask, in the budget, that we are balancing the budget on street aid money. What if street aid money does not come due to the state of Tennessee not providing it?
What if Walmart closes tomorrow?
We'd be in trouble. And we'd be in trouble there, too.
The state is currently cutting. It is not a facetious question or a fictitious question. It is a, we're balancing a budget on money that's to be used for the City of Fairview to increase its roads, its bridges, and its maintenance of things that we can't fix without money. The revenue will not increase that much. I did speak last meeting about that money being for a purpose, and it to be used wisely. It's now being used, as expressed in the last meeting, for payments of vehicles purchased. Is that correct, CFO, Mr. Darty?
Read that again, please.
The street aid money is being allocated for debt payments for maintenance equipment. Is that correct?
Let me double check.
I believe we spoke of it, and you broke down that some was coming from park money, some was coming from street aid, and some was coming from drug fund, is the reason I make that statement.
I think we took that out.
I think we did, too, but let me double check.
Because we did discuss that there were no projects, there was $25,000 in the budget that was being put there in case we had potholes or situations that came about in 2014, 15. And that street aid money that currently in our, what we call a sub-fund, as of July 1, 2014, is 130,000. And if that is monies to fix bridges, to fix roads, to repair something that may need it for our taxpayers to drive on good roads, that was $130,000. We projected 25,000. The rest of that money? The statement made at the last meeting was, "And maintenance equipment also," meaning it was paying for something purchased.
Yes, I'm showing a budget for the state's street aid fiscal year 2015 of 114,000 dollars total. We took all the salaries out, highways and streets. We did up the street paving and improvements of 40,000, because we felt like 25 probably wasn't enough. But I felt like, the committee felt like, and I talked to Keith Paisley on several occasions, and we feel like that money could be better used for our streets. And so much, I think this last year, 117,000 went to salaries. So we made the decision to try to grow that bond and get the salary down. But as far as, as far as maintenance, I would say 940 machine improvement, and that's, that's not necessarily maintenance, so I don't, I don't see any maintenance in those things.
So the difference of the 40,000 that's been changed, I made a note, 40,000, and then you put all of the salaries, the 553% increase for 180,000 in highways and streets?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Other discussion?
Mrs. Brooks, I want to apologize to you for it seeming like some of us here don't trust what you've presented to us. And I just want you to know that I, I am in full understanding of what you have brought forth.
It's always wise to question, because sometimes people make errors.
And I know that things can change, but I also know that there are many people across this city that have mortgages. And I don't think that their employers will pay them their full year's salary on July the 1st, so they don't have the money to pay their house payment for the next 12 months. So people need to understand that all these numbers that Commissioner Visel has been showing us are changing every month. There's more coming in, there's more going out. To try to make it sound like you have to have all the money when you start is ludicrous. And to try to delay voting on this tonight makes absolutely no sense. If you don't want to vote for the budget, don't vote for it. If you don't want to give the employees raises, don't vote for it. Make a motion to take the raises out. But I was skeptical. I thought we were in much more trouble than what I've seen since I got the PowerPoint presentation the other day on the email. I thought, "We're going to be in a mess," because that's all I've heard, is we're in a mess. Well, folks, we're not in a mess. Everything is under control, the city's not closing its doors, Walmart's not going to close, nor is the state of Tennessee. Everything is okay. We need to do exactly what you said and watch it month to month. Nothing here is going to get out of hand, as long as we keep our eyes on it. The five of us up here can make these decisions. If we don't want to pay the employees, let's, let's don't pay them. I think that's crazy, since we found in here that we can do it. It, it's that simple. I'm ready to vote tonight. If there wants to be another meeting in the meantime, then that's fine. Whoever wants to attend it and go over it is fine. There's going to be a public hearing. I mean, we're, we're doing this, we're not raising taxes. I've been here 14 years, as I stated before. I have never voted to raise taxes. But I've seen the property tax rate reduced at least three times, maybe four. I guess I'm getting too old to remember. I guess I'm getting too old to remember. We make it every single year. We're not in the business to make money off the citizens. You know what should really happen if we have this surplus at the end of the year? We should be writing you a check back. We should be giving you money back. That's exactly what should be happening. We're in the business to break even and to provide you a service, and that's what we need to do.
Um, Mayor, I would like to make a comment. I really feel like that M Task, they make a recommendation of 25% of our annual budget in reserves. We did not have that this year. And that's, when Tom and this committee came together, that's what was scary. It wasn't a big hoopla of, we're, you know, just trying to, you know, use a scare tactic. The truth was, they were having to borrow from restricted reserves to make payroll. That's a dangerous situation to be, because we didn't have enough reserves. So the issue is not employees and $30,000. The issue is, how are we going to cut the budget? And what I want to see is a budget where I feel like we can be at peace. We don't have to worry about, are we going to make payroll? Because I guarantee you, those employees would much rather have the guarantee, because you're right, they count on those monthly salaries and the checks. They count on it. They want their salary, is what they want. The 2% merit, they count it, they want it, but it's not a part of their annual budget yet. They will add that 2% when they get the raise. And if those employees had already counted that 2% in theirs, then we can't help that. The problem is, we can get out of this, but we have to be conservative, and there has to be cuts. Now, you know, you may not like us asking questions, or me asking questions, or my questions, but, you know, I want to feel good about this budget. And last year, I didn't feel good about the budget, even though, as a board, we all came together and made cuts and didn't use the whole Walmart projection. But, you know, that got us kind of in trouble. I mean, if we're having to borrow from our restricted funds to make payroll, we need to be scared. And if it wasn't for Mr. Hall, and it wasn't for Mr. Darty coming in and pulling the reins and making this budget, it would not have happened. And I say hallelujah that we can sit here and say that we're going to end, um, in the budget. But we have opportunity to do better this time. And that's what I would like to see. I would like to see us have a budget where we don't have to worry. And the people deserve that. To have 25% of our budget in reserves is not too much to ask. And if we don't have that, and we don't, then we need to be able to say, what can we hold off? What can we cut back? Because I'm not raising taxes.
Yes, ma'am. I, and you'll have to just tell me after the meeting, Commissioner Carroll, but I don't remember ever seeing anything from M Task that said we ought to have 25%. The numbers that I'm familiar with are that we ought to have two months of operating expenses, which for us would be approximately $400,000 per month, or $800,000. And we have $776,000 in, in the operating, in the restricted funds. Now, granted, they're not in the general move them in, move them out fund, but we are within what I believe to be a close proximity of the, of the guidelines. Secondly, uh, uh, I, I have been part of a team that's been working this diligently. And from everything we can come up with, we've cut everything that we can cut. I hear a lot of discussion about cut, and I want to cut, and I want to cut. But I never hear what it is that you want to cut, except the employee's salary or their raises. And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not a perfect accountant. As Donna said, we can make mistakes. But every time we've spread this sheet, uh, we can't find the magic wand that seems to be there, uh, in, in terms of cut, 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 cut. We, most of the items that we have, when you go down through the expenses, are things that we can, uh, either not cut or not without, not within our control. We can't, uh, cut the money that we owe the county for the health department. We negotiated that, we're under a contract. Uh, we, two years ago, we spent $40,000 on uniforms for our policemen and firemen and parks department and stuff, and we're entering the year with a budget of, of, of $27,000 on, on that. Well, you could eliminate that they don't buy any clothes, or they don't buy, uh, bulletproof vests that actually stop the bullets, or that you, you, there isn't a base expense for running a city. And, uh, I just would be interested to see your spreadsheet where you've gone through and identified those things that, uh, could be cut, and what your take on within those things. Uh, because you can cut the budget to create more surplus, but then if you have to go back to it, aren't you just repeating what we've already done? And, and that's, that's my only problem in comments. I, I think we've fulfilled, as a committee and as a CFO, I think we've fulfilled what you asked for, yet it, it doesn't seem to be any satisfaction from that. That, uh, six months ago, we started with a $400,000 problem, and now it's $99,000 or less. We started with a budget that was a half a million dollars with the request over, and now we're giving you a $162,000 surplus. I just don't get it. Maybe you can enlighten us with some of your worksheets or something on how you would make this work. Thank you.
Um, actually, I'm not looking for y'all to cut. I'm looking for the department heads to go into their budgets and see their operating expenses and what can they cut. That's what I'm looking for. I mean, it's great that y'all can rearrange the budget, you can talk, you know, say, oh, consult M Task, well, let's change this line over because it was wrong. I mean, really, the, okay. The money that is found is partially due to Tom and the accounting knowledge and M Task, and then the other part is the higher projection of Walmart. But it doesn't mean we're totally out of the clear. I mean, really, I think you should take the last year's budget and cut it, because we inflated it too much, counting on Walmart and some of different things, and then, you know what, life happens. You know, we sat there with the PowerPoint, and we said, well, that you gave us all the reasons, which are true, you know, that we were the short. But y'all, do you not think that might happen this year? I mean, can we just pretty much say nothing's not going to happen? And basically, we didn't account for some of those reasonings, like weather. We can't. So we have to be conservative. So the only way I know to do that is to cut the budget. And now where? I, I know it's hard to take blood from a turnip, but, you know, there has to be somewhere. You know, I know the employees is 30, you know, it's not a lot. You said 30,000 earlier. And it doesn't seem like a lot in this big of a budget. And I'm all for morale, but I really don't think the people want to see our employees getting raises when we are in such financial crunch and trouble. And I'm not saying we shouldn't give it, I'm just saying, wait. And let's see, if we have all this extra surplus, everything comes in, we can, you know, come up with a plan to put money back in our reserves. You know, it's great. Y'all did a great job. Y'all sat down, yeah, I think it's conservative. I've never doubted whether the finances committees didn't try for the most conservative. But I just think that somewhere, you know, um, we got to figure out to cut. And I don't think employees is the only way, but, you know, I do think. And then also, if you want to go to, um, Mr. Busell, if you want to go to, I have a couple websites, and you could, will see where the fund balance should be 25%, and I'll give them to you after.
I, I do agree with Commissioner Carroll on the, on the one point, on the, the raises. I, I felt the same way she did, that if the money wasn't going to be there, if we weren't going to have a surplus, that, that we didn't need to do that on July the 1st, that it, that it was possible that we could put it off, make it retroactive, whatever we needed to do. But after seeing them work diligently through this process, and the numbers are there, I have no problem with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Two points. And I don't have any problem with you putting it off until January and see where we're at. But we did take into consideration that they're going to take a significant hit when we change their insurance, and we thought that might offset it somewhat. Um, and now I forgot my other point. Oh, on the truck, I thought it had already been voted in, in heat. You told Keith to go buy it, is why we put that in there. I thought that was already passed.
That is correct.
Do they even make them yet?
I don't know.
It can be retracted if you were really being conservative on this budget, is my point.
Actually, it cannot. Truck has been bought. Contract's been signed. Truck's coming.
Other discussion?
Where, where was the truck being purchased from?
Williamson County Motors.
All right, and what fund was it coming out of, Tom?
Park.
Yeah, the park.
Park fund. So it's not coming out of city tax dollars that the citizens raised? Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, that it's not their tax dollar being spent for that truck.
But it does reduce the park fund.
It does reduce the park fund, but it does...
It reduces the reserve of 773, because when you add all those up, it's a reserve, so it's in there, and it's minus. So point is, it's taking away.
The point is that it is not tax dollars that is being spent to buy that truck. It is coming out of the park fund for the park purpose. It is exactly what it's there for.
But it does change the budget. It affects the budget. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it affects the budget. It comes out of our lineups.
That is correct.
Well, I will state that I'm not comfortable with the fact that we take money from funds to cover debt or purchases that may not be necessary at this time. It's piled on our taxpayers. If we continue down this road, we will be unable to pay for future projects that maybe those restricted funds were created for, such as park fund. I'm not okay with putting the citizens that trust this board in more debt when we have no money to fix a bridge or clear a road in the park after a storm or a challenge with those monies. We are getting to a point where we must decide if we will be conservative with the hard-earned money of our citizens, or we will put their children and grandchildren in debt for years to come. I just hope that the projections, as I stated, if the state is considering a decrease in sales tax and we are showing an increase, I ask for confirmation that that money will validly be there, because if not, it's considered a fluffed revenue, spending every penny, then puts you to a place of taking out of savings, what we call reserves, and at some point, there is a concern with the emergencies, as stated, as Commissioner Carroll. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mayor, I'd like to move for a recess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, B. C. Discuss and/or take action on Section 9 of Bill 2014-18, Ordinance Number 840.
It's an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Move to approve. Second.
Discussion?
I think, I believe our motion needs to be to establish the tax rate and then move to approve.
The number.
And so...
I agree.
If I could amend the motion to say that the tax rate, I believe, is 0.635 is the current tax rate?
Right.
63.5, that it remain the same for the coming fiscal year, 63.5.
Second Amendment.
In discussion, I'll add that that's Section 9. It says, "There is hereby levied a property tax of 0.635 per 100 of assessed value on all real and personal property." All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That does negate the first motion of acceptance. The detail was put in. The first motion is withdrawn. Or...
It's taken care of.
Taken care of. Item number D. Discuss and/or take action on Resolution 08-14, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of, I'm reading your stuff. Obtaining public comment on the proposed budget for the city of Fairview.
Move to approve.
Ms. Kentrell, motion?
Second.
First and second, discussion. Mr. Kentrell?
I'm sorry.
His name was next to him.
Those, that one and the next one, too, are just setting the public hearing for June 30th, for, for, uh, the, the tax rate and the budget.
Public hearing and the...
For June 30th, 2014. Any other discussion?
Seven, seven o'clock.
Yes, it's in the, it's in there.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item E. Discuss and/or take action on Resolution 09-14, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the property tax rate for the city of Fairview fiscal year 2015.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Same time as the other.
Immediately following.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item F. Discuss and/or take action on Addendum A to the interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview regarding extending the agreement for the Fairview Health Clinic through June 30th, 2015.
Mayor, that, that addendum just extends the interlocal agreement that was signed back in 2011, doesn't change any of the provisions, everything stays the same, except it moves the expiration date to June 30th, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item G. Discuss and/or take action on interlocal agreement between Williamson County and city of Fairview regarding periodic roadwork and maintenance to municipal roads.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments about it. I am very glad that we have finally come to some type of agreement, mutual agreement to assist and help each other whenever it's necessary between the two different parties, and we can help reduce the costs that we have involved in doing that. Uh, I was very happy with the agreement that we have. That's all I, so...
Other discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been working for the last month or so with both Commissioner Joneses, who neither one could be here tonight, because one's in Gulf Shores on vacation, one's in Daytona Beach. And, uh, this is an agreement that I'm hoping Larry's going to give his blessing... And this is an agreement that I'm hoping Larry's going to give his blessing for, that the City of Thompson Station and Nolan's will both have this exact same agreement. What we have is certain city roads on the outskirts of our city that you may go 200 feet and be in the city, and then you've got 500 feet of the county, then 2,000 feet, and it just all goes back and forth. And what it's going to do is this, when the county comes out to pave, they will pave the entire stretch, and they will bill us exact cost for what it costs them to do the work. So they will pave the road. It'll all be done at one time, and we'll pay them exact cost, where we don't have to go out and bid stuff, hire contractors, and spend a lot more money. So it's very frugal.
Just to reiterate, it'll be upon our request, am I correct?
Yes.
So that we can make sure we have it within the budget to be able to pay for those improvements.
They will work with us in every aspect.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will ask, has this already been approved by the county?
It has, but it has to be, it has had preliminary approval. They will have to put their final vote, and the mayor sign it afterwards. But this document came from them.
Do we need to give them a resolution of approval from this meeting? Or statement of intent, or whatever the proper wording is?
No, if you pass the agreement, you sign the agreement. Interlocal agreement, you're fine.
Thank you.
And I didn't see, there's not any problem with it.
Okay. Ask any opposed? Everybody good? H. Okay, in the conversation of budget and the conversation, several of the PowerPoint presentations are really pieces of this next item. And it's discuss and/or take action of a stabilization fund, stabilization plan for rebuilding the reserve fund. And there are several pieces of your PowerPoint presentation, as I mentioned, will be part. And if you think about the things as far as the extra monies in revenue going towards reserve, that being a stabilization fund account, but a plan of action for where we are now. So in your PowerPoint presentation, if we could pull some of those items that y'all have suggested and prepare that plan, I'd like to see that on the next agenda, on the next meeting's agenda, to be able to lay that plan out. Commissioner Bissell, is that clear, or do I need, did I make myself clear?
What you're wanting us to do is to take the things from our PowerPoint that had to do with the steps in rebuilding the plan, I mean, rebuilding the reserves and just howl at them out for you? Is that what you wanted?
It says maintaining a financial, yes, sir, maintaining of, and others maybe, and other items maybe. But I did see a lot of them in that. There's a reason I'm highlighting that and not starting from scratch. It says stabilization funds, maintaining a financial stabilization account is a necessary for sound financial management and fiscal accountability. The city's governing body has the authority to establish a financial stabilization account. This will be a committed fund balance. A financial stabilization account is established for the purpose of providing funds, it does say, for an urgent that affects safety and public, such as flood and tornadoes. So it is almost an emergency fund of how will we pull some of the revenue out to get that stabilization fund. But I would like to see also a reserve plan, as you had mentioned, some of the money as surplus comes about, that it's put aside, and it's, hate to use the word earmarked, but it's positioned that it goes into the reserve. So we continue looking at our rainy day fund, if you want to call that, and be fiscally responsible in that way.
Our next board meeting is the 17th of July. Is that correct?
You couldn't consider this at the June 30th. That's a special meeting.
Don, you think we'll have time to get together and make it together before then? 17th of July?
Three weeks, I mean, four weeks away. What'd you say, Mr. Kentrell?
Said it would have to do it on the 17th of July, because they couldn't consider it at the June 30th meeting, because it's a special meeting.
Okay. I thought that's what you were saying. I just wanted to make sure you didn't say we had to. Okay?
We'll do our best, and if not, we'll report out where we are.
Excellent.
I would ask that if any of the commissioners or has any suggestions, that they please forward them to Don and I on email.
What times your meeting? I'd love to be part.
We had, I said, you know, when we said-
Okay, just please keep me in the loop. That would be great. Okay? And at that point, we'll defer that. Motion for deferment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine, aye. And the new business, and I wrote it in the corner, but that's yours. Discuss and/or take action on the City of Fairview hosting, you had the wording, hosting a forum for the city judge candidates to be held at City Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, ma'am. We have three candidates for our city judge, Lee Dryer, Judy Oxford, Derek Burks. If they want to approach the podium.
Stand up.
Approach the podium. And they will furnish their own moderator, and they will, they're going to discuss a time where they can arrange it all at one time. And it takes board approval to allow me to host it here in City Hall.
Move to approve.
Do you guys have a date?
We do not. That's going to be part of the problem. First, we'll have to find a moderator. We'll have to look at what their calendar is, as far as, look at what the city has available, as well as all three of our calendars.
Pick a date, if I may, and we can find the moderator later.
I'm unable to pick a date right now, but look at my calendar with work, as well as my family and spouse.
Well, I mean, I second the motion, but I think before we finally approve it, we have to have a date.
I agree.
Well, we can, we can put it on the next agenda. You're not going to have it before the next meeting, are you?
When's the next meeting?
July 17th.
That would be the eve of early voting. I'd like to have it before then. I'll make myself available any Saturday or any weeknight to have the debate. Love to have it here.
Ms. Oxford?
I was told that we were, that the only two days that were available were the 7th and the 14th, and I already have prior commitments on both of those dates. So I'm happy to do it, but I don't feel like I can break other commitments to do it.
Without a moderator and a moderator's schedule, I believe we're premature in even asking you for a date.
With respect, Mayor, we can find a moderator. We can agree on one. We can find someone who's available.
And where were those dates, 7th and 14th, proposed? Okay.
Our calendar is free on those two nights.
Okay.
And we're tied up all the other nights between now and then.
If you'll give me three, four minutes, I'll go get my calendar and see what I was on.
July the 10th should be open. That's the second Thursday. We have no meeting that night.
It's kind of a catch 22.
You can have it after a public hearing.
You need a date, you get a moderator, but you need, the moderator needs to know the date, so.
Right.
All right. We could do it June 30th, after the meeting, the special meeting.
What time would that be?
Good luck. I mean, in theory, it's a good idea. How's 11:00 PM?
I could probably make that. I do have a prior commitment that day, too. It's a deposition.
What about the 10th? You shook your head, yes. 10th is good.
The 10th, I've actually got a fundraiser scheduled that day.
Well, why don't y'all, can we not just, because this is what I don't understand.
Can't we approve it and just, we don't even have to approve it. Can't the city manager, they get with the city manager, and if we're sponsoring it?
We're just asking, we're just approving it to be held here.
Why, but here's the thing. I want to go back a little bit on y'all, and sorry to drag y'all into this. But there was conversations before about having, hosting it. Now, when I ran and Beverly ran, the city hosted it, and I think it was fine. But I think during y'all's election section, somebody was talking about hosting it, and then they couldn't, because there was all these reasons that the city didn't want to be involved and host it, so an outside group had to come in and do it. Now, they, we used City Hall, and it was fine. So I just want the city attorney's opinion, because it looks like, you know-
That was my question to the city manager, is I don't believe we should host it. We should allow the public building to be utilized by whomever chooses to host it.
And if they want to coordinate it and coordinate a moderator-
It's the opposite of that.
Yeah. Hi?
You can, you can give Mr. Hall the authority to set the meeting time, working with the three judges' candidates. I agree that it probably would be better if you had somebody not connected with the city hosting it. I don't think you'd probably get into any trouble over it, but it just, it doesn't look good.
The city's not going to moderate it. They're going to have, they're going to find a moderator.
The city's not hosting the debate. They are just the venue in which it's going to be held.
Well, and that's fine, but that's not how it was explained.
It was presented to me as the City of Fairview hosting, and that's why I questioned it.
No, that's not the way. That's not good.
I said, is that hood, or what do you mean, host?
July 21st, Mr. Hall?
We have a date of July 21st. So it's at seven o'clock.
I mean, the high school was happy to do, of course, they're not in, never mind. You know, they were happy to do this one, and because they used their classes. But I'm sure there's a group that would be happy to-
I'm sure that between the three of them, they can-
They could host, yeah, y'all can do it yourself. Find your own moderator, you know? And then take citizens, you know, emails or whatever for questions, or-
Do we have a motion yet, Mayor?
Well, I believe that the attorney just said it would be best if we didn't follow through with the motion.
I was going to amend the motion.
Or we can withdraw it.
Withdraw it and start over, or just let's-
Is the motion been withdrawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We have a city manager comment of what-
It probably doesn't need board action if-
I don't think so either.
Well, we have an agreed date of the 21st, so we'll supply the venue here for, to have their forum and their moderator.
City Manager Hall, I haven't agreed till 21st yet. I've got to check with my spouse to make sure she's available with the children.
There'd be no action?
Just announce to us when they all can agree, you know, my next meeting be, you know, give it to us, where we can all know when to show up.
Make sure we can get it on the website.
Yeah.
Website.
Thank you. There'd be no action. We'll move on. City Manager, item for discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I'd like to let Frank Hummer speak in my time slot for a minute, and then I would like to reiterate after he speaks. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I just have a few comments I'd like to make. The Water Authority of Dixon County has a plan for a $6 million, five-year upgrade of Fairview's water system. They've hired an expert in the system loss to evaluate our system to identify and rectify points of loss due to faulty meters and pipe seepage. This will not only increase our volume, but also it will, it will, these improvements will provide water service, adequate water service to other parts of the city that are Concerning the sewer, I have left at your seat a copy of an EPA wastewater back sheet on intermittent sand filters. Mr. Hall and I met with Michael Adams of the Authority. He explained the sand filters. The sand filter technology is the technology of the future. An important point that he made concerning these sand filters is that the Authority will be operating and maintaining these systems. TVA is assisting us with facilitating a meeting in late July or early August. The purpose of this meeting will be to discuss infrastructure for growth, specifically at our I-40 and I-80 interchanges. Mr. Adams will be making a presentation on our water system improvements, as well as the sand filter sewage disposal. We are inviting the property owners, well, anyone who's interested, of course, can come. We're inviting property owners that are in the vicinity of the interchanges. We also will invite planning commission members, and of course, you all will be informed as to the time of this very important, what we would call open house, or open forum, which will be held at our, at the Buoy Nature Center. One last note I'd like to just mention concerning sewers. Without giving you any details of the catastrophe in Jefferson County, Alabama, that I'm familiar with, one of the best moves the City of Fairview has made was selling the water and sewer system to the Authority. With this newer technology of sand filters, places like Jefferson County will be bankrupt due to their overinvestment in treatment plants. But it, as an, it was an opportune time to have the Authority take over the utilities, because they can put together a system and maintain it, and they have the economies of scale much better than the city would have. That's all.
Thank you very much.
These questions have popped up at several meetings that Frank and I have attended. We've attended two TVA retail division, and of course, their main thing was what our infrastructure was going to be like in the future. They're the ones that's guiding this meeting possibly, and meet with the Water Authority of Dixon. The other meetings that we attend, they seem to ask questions about our infrastructure, our equipment for the future. One thing that's come up is our quint. We're not going to attract a hotel or anything unless we do have a ladder truck. This is some of the questions that we're being hit with in these meetings. And we've had three meetings yesterday that was very informative. And we've got one coming up next month at the Nashville Convention Center. TVA's involved with that. One of the meetings we were at was at the Chamber of Commerce in Murfreesboro with a nine-panel discussion with retail developers. It just so happens in this particular setting is where that there is no sewer systems. There is all this onsite sand filter system. They've got some beautiful buildings up there that's operating off of that. This is something that we're going to have to educate our citizens on in the future, and the major developments that's going to come along will be this system according to the Water Authority of Dixon. And the key thing, like Frank said, is that they will maintain it. It won't be a private company maintaining their systems. But anyway, we want to keep you all informed as where we have been going to these meetings and finding out the necessary things. The other thing I would like to thank Tom, the Finance Committee, on the budget, the process that they went through, the many hours that Tom has spent on the weekends at nights to 11 o'clock. I think he's done a fantastic job. He's trying to get the system in that needs to be the future of our city, and I'm behind him 100 percent. The M-TAS meetings that he's been, the M-TAS classes that he's already passed, I dedicate tonight to Tom and the Finance Committee that's worked so hard in getting where we're at tonight. I know there's some disagreement, but I think it's time that we all come together, and we need to proceed in the future, the way that Tom has got everything set up, everything in line items. Of course, I know that revenue is the big, big problem, but we still feel that our revenue source is going to be here. We see a lot of activity from the Code's Department, and there is very much increase in- in home building right now, and there's future on the commercial side, and I just feel good about us. It's just that we're under where we're at right now. As far as the meetings with the department heads, I think we've had as many as five meetings with them, individual meetings, getting their bottom budget that they can live with to still supply the service that we need to supply to our citizens. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Other staff comments this evening?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm going to go through this rather quickly. First thing I want to tell you is I thought this was good news that I got earlier today. I need your, y'all's approval to send a letter to Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System about a decrease in our rate, that we've gone from 11.72 percent to 7.4, which should provide somewhere in the neighborhood of $84,000 in savings. And I just got this news. I'd like to get this letter off tomorrow. I don't need any signatures. I just need y'all to tell me, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, bye, Nick.
Great.
As far as revenues, property tax... Next slide, please. On revenues, one thing you'll see different, this is, this is my first transfer in. One thing we will have in June is all the transfers in. This is something that I would like to change, and I'm talking with auditors, I'm talking with MTS, talking with, I'll be, I've got a meeting with the local gov rep all day next Wednesday in the accounting system, but if you see Facilities Fund transfer in 13 percent, that, I did transfer that in. One thing that some of my numbers, numbers don't show is a reflection of the transfers in, and I would like to, as I, as we use them, I want to go ahead and transfer that money where it's a better reflection of what's actually going on. Next slide, please. Expenses, we had a rough, rough month, but you know, we're in better shape than I thought we were going to be in. We had three payrolls in the month of May, and we also had the debt service payment on the City Hall that pretty much gobbled everything up. Let's see. And that is pretty much my report due to time. If there's any questions, I'd be fine to answer.
I did have some expense questions that I was holding. It wasn't part of our discussion earlier, but I will ask you now. Bid or looked at? Can you, is there like an annual renewal or annual evaluation of that?
We've been analyzing it ongoing. Nick has refurbished our entire phone setup, and I probably, we have sat down, I believe, he could give the details better than I, but it's, I don't have an actual percentage, but I believe it's a substantial savings of what we did have. I believe we actually had some people still getting charged for people that didn't even, that weren't still here. I mean, so we've gone through and combed through and called out any, any excess that did not need to be paid, and I know if you don't need a phone, we, you don't have it. Most, most of the expense goes to the, to the public safety as far as the phones. Nick, would you like to add anything to that?
Nick just hung himself in the back.
And that, that doesn't have to be addressed this evening due to time. I just had an inquiry there, and then when you say things about phones, is that annually looked at? Because if we're paying for people's phones that are no longer, did they switch? Has that been a year? That's why I asked that, is how often is that analyzed, caught, and readdressed?
Right now, it's an ongoing process. We're, I'm asking Nick to just look at that statement closely every month and just make sure we're, we're getting what we think we're getting.
In the IT piece?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then another question is, do you have a list, being that we have new vehicles that I believe have good tires, I would hope that line item 334, tires and tubes, we, we have estimated in the next budget of 17.5. Could I see a list, not tonight, but could you get a list of what departments have projected the tires that need to be for that figure to be in the budget? And also, the, is there a, tools is $5,000? To where is that something that someone has handed in a list of tools, or is that just a $5,000 credit card for whatever's needed whenever? And that, again, is just being fiscally responsible. You've budgeted for that expense to be spent. What department and what list are they requesting for that amount of money?
Yes, I did not require a list. I came from the department heads, and they all got, each tool request was cut a couple of times. I will have to request a list to provide that for you.
And on the second page, 946, fire equipment, $24,000 projected to $80,000. Is that just the Quint equipment, or is there other equipment, fire equipment, that's being purchased this year?
To my knowledge, $60,000 of that is for the Quint, and the remaining are, and I forget what they call them, the, the...
Air tanks.
Well, they're outfits. There's coats and all, whatever.
So, eleven outfits or something in it?
Breakout gear.
Breakout gear. I think there do, several of those. And I think Chief, Chief said they were $1,800 a pop. Yeah, they, I think he's had, I can't remember exactly how many he said, but I believe he said it was, it was quite a few that were expiring this year. I'm not sure if they have a two-year life or a three-year life.
And the 3 percent, I guess the percentage I'll have to get clearer on, but this just says that our budget from 2000, or there's a 3 percent change in expenses. The last page, the very last line under FY 1415, there's a 3 percent change. Is that correct or a typo, or am I reading it wrong? Can someone clarify? Because if we went up almost $200,000 in debt for the police cars and the fire truck, a 3 percent, I'm, I'm just questioning, just the number itself is odd, and I don't understand
Yes, that is the difference between the proposed 2015 and the budgeted amount for 2014.
So, we had a 3 percent expense...
Increase.
Does that sound right to you?
We, I mean...
Salaries is a big part of it.
Yeah, I mean, we cut pretty much, the increase is the salaries and the, the debt, additional debt service, everything, all the departments are pretty much cut, except when you look through the departments, there have been some, we did not, we moved traffic over into police, so there's some, a little more expense in police, but there's no traffic There's, that is consolidated, and then, but pretty much down the line, most of the departments have a substantial, or at least the same as what they had the year before.
Okay, other staff comments? Thank you. City Attorney comments?
I have nothing further at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners comments? Commissioner Sutton?
Just two or three small things, whether or not small. I want to thank the Budget Committee for all your hard work. This is the most intense budget outline that I've seen since I've been a city commissioner. It's only my sixth year, so I know that y'all put a lot of time and effort into it, and how difficult it must be to come up with a budget for a city that's growing at the rate that we're growing, and the anticipation of funds and everything else. I know that the county is anticipating growth, and I just want to tell you, I appreciate all your time and effort because I know it's not a simple thing to do. The mayor just got through asking some questions a few minutes ago about the budget. The budget's not over. The vote while ago was to move forward with the budget, but it doesn't approve the budget. So, there's still changes that could be made, just for clarity on that. Some people said, well, you voted for the budget. Well, you didn't move, you voted to move forward with the budget. City Manager Hall, I can't thank you enough. This has been an extreme time for somebody to step in with the things that you've had to face, the budget, the new personnel, the new management that you put up here. I want to tell you, I appreciate everything that you've done. The citizens, thank y'all for being here so late tonight. I hope I have electricity when I get home. May not. They may cut it off from now, they don't want to get home. But the reason I, I'll give, I don't usually do this, but a brief explanation, and I have a problem with people that don't do what they say they're going to do, whether it's going to be a contract later on or whatever. So, we just heard about chemicals that they were using. They're going to tell us no, but it was still not clear in my mind. That's the reason I voted no on that for them, and I would vote no again tomorrow if it came back up again. Thank you all. We've had a couple deaths in the city, more than that probably, but we've had Mr. McCord, Mr. McCord and Mr. Lovett passed away this week, so our prayers go out to their families and any other person that has lost anybody within their homes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Visel?
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Carroll?
Nothing, Mayor. That was hard, but nothing, Mayor. Thank you. Again, thank you for your patience. It's wonderful to see the interest of the citizens. I would like to ask City Manager Hall and confirm, I have spoke that I wanted to have registration for the TVA, and you were going to pull. I just wanted to confirm that that's been done, or you knew I said I want to be there? And any of the other commissioners, if you, it's, it's a very, very well-spent day of TVAs and information and how we fit in the regional of Middle Tennessee and what we have to offer and what assets we have. And the last thing I would like to request, we have done this in the past, and I would like to request that the draft proposed, the budget be posted on the website prior to the public hearing. Can that be done? It's been done in the past. Would that be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, could I ask one thing?
Sure.
On the TVA thing that you're talking about, could that be used as the training hours needed for the Planning Commission?
I would think so, unless the verbiage says it has to be on a specific subject, like core subject.
I think it does.
I'd say yes.
So, that's something we may want to let the rest of the Planning Commission know that...
Good point.
...be an opportunity to fulfill their hours of training. Sorry.
Thank you.
Is this a free event, though?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Just double checking.
Wait, it's $95 for an official? $95 for an official?
That's for the one at the...
That's the, the one downtown in July is the one I'm talking about.
That's that one. But the one we're going to have here, that one can be used for a training.
I see.
Right. That's the one we can use for training.
Where Mr. Adams will come.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and as well as, I think Jeremiah Pyrom's on, his assistant Amanda, as well as the TVA people will be there.
And that has not been scheduled yet?
No, I haven't scheduled that yet. We wanted to see what happens at the Convention Center downtown on the 9th and 10th.
That's the 9th and 10th of July. That's the one I was speaking of, and again, it's a wonderful, wonderful day.
And Frank does have your name included.
Okay.
Be anything else? Motion for adjournment?
Adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Thank you.